So I'm assuming that the increased audio and the thumbs up means that we are somewhat live. Good evening, um, lady and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's select board meeting. Welcome, Blythe, who is brought, who has, uh, no, Select Board Zoo is still available, but still viewable, but she's right next to Select Board View because she's on a trip, but yet still joining us. Um, and tonight's meeting is both live as well as available via Zoom and all sorts of other media as a result of the pandemic, and I'm not going to bother with the Mass General laws because at this point I feel like everybody knows, and if you don't, you're here already. So with that, if everyone could please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have to, before I invite, uh, Blythe to speak on COVID updates, to, um, actually really only one comment, and that is just that Kevin, as I turned, I thought that that was one of those alcoholic fizzy drinks, and I thought-
I thought we decided that we're okay with that now.
Oh, my God.
We're not okay with that?
That's awkward.
Let this find the key.
I thought it was the greatest idea, and I was like, ah, we should all do that. So, all right, with that, um, Blythe, COVID-19 updates.
Hi, everybody, from cold and rainy Portland, Oregon. Um, I'm out here at the International City and County Management Association Conference, which has been, um, a lot, it's been very exciting and informative. Uh, COVID-19 updates, unfortunately, we had a, uh, for us, a large uptick in cases last week, about 16 of them, and, um, our positivity rate, uh, jumped up from about 14 to 18, almost 19%. Um, hopefully that's an aberration, and it will come back down again. Um, we're not in the low end of the county this week, um, but hopefully some of those cases will drop off and we will start to go back down again. Um, I don't really have any other, uh, information to share about any programs, uh, at this point.
I have no questions, Kevin?
No.
No? All right. Well, thank you very much, Blythe. I'm sure we'll see you later in the program. Feel free to come on back, our little television program. We need puppets and other things to get the audience, um, more excited, not that they aren't already. So then the next is public comment. Can you see our eyes just all turned there? Mr. Alex, why don't you come on up, uh, grab yourself a microphone? I'll get my timer. Yep, yep. I got, I have a breath or two in me.
This week I was supposed to get answers from the last meeting?
Oh, then Blythe went on a boondoggle, and I forgot.
Okay.
I did write notes, though.
So we didn't get nowhere?
Not from me. I don't know if Blythe has anything, but I'm guessing no.
Ernie can remind me of his questions. I might have answers.
I was wondering why we-
I won't even time this part.
Okay. I was wondering why we were going to be spending approximately $650,000 to $700,000 for temporary housing for the fire station when we could buy a piece of land for under $500,000, according to the owner. And this is, I don't know where your camera is, this perspective-
I can see it.
What it would look like, except for sorry, Chief, it's only got four doors. He wants five, that'll fit with no problem because the mock-up is 350 feet long.
So if I can answer, uh, the answer that I would give, uh, Mr. Alex, is that the feasibility study is exactly where we're going to learn, ask these questions and, and recommend a course of action. Until we go through that, uh, we're not completely sure that we need temporary facilities. It may be possible to, to renovate or build this building in phases that allows us to have, uh, limited temporary facilities or perhaps even none. We don't know the answer to that yet, so I think, uh, it's just premature to be able to give you that answer.
Well, I think that's a great answer.
As you know, my background is over 30 years in heavy construction and inspecting in gunfire stations, everything else. That fire station cannot be rehabbed. We've already found that out in town with, if we didn't have a building that we shouldn't have. You cannot rehab a piece that's been rehabbed and rehabbed, and it's just, you're going to be overwhelmed with extras and time wise. It's just going to lag on, and then we're just going to have a piece of junk when it's done with nothing but high maintenance. So that's-
That's what we need to learn. Um, one of the good things about the committee interviewing five different firms, so as we heard, five different perspectives about the project, and some of them were very much the same. And, uh, when we get to the topic of the contract for the, for the architect for feasibility, I think you can hear a little bit more, but we need to study all those things and come up with a thoughtful plan and decide if it's the right one for the town to move forward.
Will the feasibility study, will they have a chance to put that piece of land in there as part of the feasibility study?
Until we understand what we can do with this parcel, uh, we're not planning to look at other parcels. We need to understand whether we can work forward through with this parcel or not first.
Blythe, if I could ask, um, and then I'm going to shut down the back and forth on this topic, when you have meetings, they are posted, correct, and the plan is going forward to, um, have meetings that the public will have access to and be able to ask questions of?
Absolutely, both in person or in Zoom, whatever people are comfortable with.
Okay, thank you. Was there anything else that you had today?
Okay, then that was it.
All right, cool. Did you make that?
Yeah.
I like it. I like, I like scale models. Is it to scale, though, Ernie?
It is to scale.
I actually, I believe, you look, it's nice.
Separate cars, they're a little bigger.
Monster cars, big wheels. Is there anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. Blythe, would you like to take us through the list?
Of course. So the action items tonight are to consider a contract with Doran Whittier as the fire station designer, and to consider approval of a contract for police lieutenant, to consider approval of the population estimate for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Alcohol Beverages and Control Commission, to consider an application, uh, for Green Communities Grant Program, and, uh, consider approval of the use of Town Hill for the San, uh, Norfolk Lions Santa Parade in early December. Uh, the two discussion items are to consider capital expenditures for the, uh, special town meeting in November and town minister updates. After that, there are four warrants to be approved and one set of minutes.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, all right, then I guess we're on to agenda item number three. Blythe?
So joining you in the room, and unfortunately, I, from my camera view, I can't see them, should be-
We like get there and like run down and spin it.
Couple of folks, there they are. Um, so pleased to have in the room, uh, John Lumiu, who is our, uh, lead person at Vertex, our owner's project manager. Uh, joining him is Don from, uh, Doran Whittier, the proposed, uh, architect designer in his firm for the project, and Kevin Champagne. I can't see too well, but our, uh, committee chairman, there you go, there he is, hi Kevin, is here, uh, and I see Chief Kenny in the front row also, uh, as a member of the committee. Uh, we're all here to recommend Doran Whittier as the firm that we think is the best one to move forward with the first feasibility and then, uh, hopefully the other, uh, other steps in design for the either renovation and re-expansion or replacement of the fire station. Um, I'll just give a brief intro and then turn it over to Kevin and to John. Um, the committee went through a very thorough process, I think, of, of putting out an RFP, and, uh, we received seven different proposals from, from firms around the, uh, the state, and the committee chose to interview five of them. I think at the end of the day, any of those five, uh, firms could have done this work and done it well, uh, but Doran Whittier clearly came out on top for a number of reasons, which I think they can all give you a little bit more detail about. And so we did select them to, to negotiate a contract with, and we have come to a contract agreement with them that is in front of you for approval tonight. Um, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Kevin and John for any comments they'd like to make.
Yep, sure. I don't know enough about the, the magic behind the window in terms of where the cameras are and stuff, so I always think it's better to have-
Thank you for that intro, Blythe. Um, as Blythe mentioned, we interviewed five architects, and we were all really impressed with all five architects, as Blythe mentioned. Probably couldn't have gone wrong with, with any of them, but, um, after a lot of discussion, after five interviews, we really came to a group consensus that Doran Whittier was head and shoulders above the other four, um, which is why they're here tonight, and we're recommending that they be, uh, selected as the architect or assigned contract, uh, for the architect. Um, we're eager, obviously, to start the feasibility study, uh, in earnest so that we can have a clear path forward. Um, when we set up this, this contract and really this, the steps here, the idea was, let's get on board for feasibility, make sure that we have the right path, we have the right team before moving to the rest, schematic design phase, design developer phase, construction documents. We feel that we do, but obviously that'll be vetted out in the, in the feasibility study. Um, we do plan on having to, to address some concerns. Obviously, our, our meetings are, are open, but we also do plan to have some community meetings where they can come and, and hear, you know, what's going on with the program, give their thoughts, so we can kind of poll the, the community and try and get really the, the right facility for the chief and for the town. Um, John, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add?
No, thank you. Um, John Lumiu from Vertex, um, the principal, uh, principal of the firm, uh, does the OPM work. Um, excited to be here. Nice to meet all of you, be in person. Um, we're excited to have Doran Whittier on the team as well. Um, I can say that, you know, personally, I've worked with Don on the Situate Public Safety Building, it was a very successful project. He was the lead, and we're currently working on two other projects with them, one of which is the Dedham Public Safety Building, which is a, is quite a significant project as well. So we're excited to be able to have them on this team. Um, and at the end of the day, I, I agree with what Kevin said, really had, we're really lucky to get a good set of responses. We were, I was, I was happy that the committee chose to interview five. It was a, a longer process, but I think, as the chief said, you know, along the way that, you know, even if it's, if there's a little bit of, of a question, if somebody could do it, you know, we're, let's interview them. So we're able to interview the five, and I think in the end, um, as Kevin said, Doran Whittier really, you know, came out on top, um, pretty easily. So we're, we're excited to get, to get started.
So I, I know over the, the last few days, Blythe and the, the town council have been working through the, the contract pretty extensively, so what you have tonight, I, I think is pretty much the culmination of those, those few days, so.
Um, if you don't mind me asking, what, um, I appreciate that they were all, um, great choices, but it's, you even said it, that this per, this, um, corporation was head and shoulders. What differentiated them in your mind?
So we, we felt that, um, given the project types that they, they'd done before really kind of reflected well on, on the type of facility we want to build, as well as, um, the, the size of, of Doran Whittier. They have 52 employees-
Oh, wow.
-on staff. So, you know, the, the, the firms that we interviewed varied in size, and, um, really, in addition to their, their extensive experience, just knowing what happened on, on previous projects, that if things came up along the way, that they were going to have the manpower really to, to address anything that comes up.
And a little less concrete is the, is the feel.
Yeah, no, I think that's a-
It was, it was a great dynamic.
Perfect answer in terms of just that.
I think they, they went first, and I think they were-
Secret sauce.
They went first and set a pretty high bar-
Okay.
Kind of throughout.
I will say, yeah, after the first interview, I said, wow, if they're all like this, it's going to be really tough.
Right.
So clearly.
Add two things.
Sure.
Uh, the two would be that, um, I felt that the attention to detail that they exhibited when talking to us and, and the other projects they've done was important, especially what, um, for the challenges we faced with detail in the police station project, uh, and that was important to all of us. Uh, we were, we're very clear with all of the firms about some of the struggles we've had in the past, and what was critical for us to be able to be successful in this project, and I think they responded well to that. I, I also learned that they have experience in Norfolk. Uh, they've done work on both the KP middle and, and high school. Um, it isn't, uh, I'm unsure exactly when that was, but I think having some understanding of our community, um, and having been here before is also important.
And the only other quick question I have before I'll open it up to the board, and sort of Blythe hit on it, um, in terms of, I'm imagining, now she's answered that, that you guys touched upon some of the problems, perceived problems, actual problems that people have experienced that the town's sort of been talking about subsequent to the prior building. How, um, what was their reaction or response when you put it to them in terms of what, I'm assuming the question, or at least one of the questions had been among, like, what would you do differently? Like, how can you, what were, how did they react or speak to our problems from before?
So one of the questions was specifically, you know, how are we going to get the public on board with this project, given what happened previously? And, uh, they, they gave the answer that really it's, it's community involvement, meeting with everyone, getting everybody's buy-ins, so that nobody's surprised by what we're doing, that early and often, community involvement is really the, the key.
And I think acknowledging, you know, acknowledging that you had the issue-
Mm-hmm.
And don't hide from it.
Right.
You know, and this is, okay, we understand what happened. We understand if you're skittish about what happened before, but here's what we're going to do to help ensure that that doesn't happen again. And there was a lot of back and forth, too, about, I think it was Blythe's question, that she asked the individual firms, you know, what processes do you have in place to QA QC your drawings to help ensure that we don't end up, you know, with a, with a problem later on? And, you know, and they answered it, answered it very well.
Awesome. Any, you have any questions?
Uh, and I'm assuming you checked with references, like you called Situate and talked to Situate and-
And, and we, well, we worked with them and had a very favorable experience, and we also checked references, a, a number of other references, and all came back very positive.
Excellent. And any buildings that, some of my experiences with new buildings is it's great when you walk in the door, and then two years down the road, it's like, oh, no, I was just going to say a word you can't say on TV, but, um, I won't say that word.
Putting a needle on it, five second delay.
But maybe a couple of projects that are a little bit older, so we can look and just make sure that they have a nice track record over time as well?
Yeah, no, I, you know, the, uh, the references that were checked weren't just projects that were just finished, um, and I think they do a good job as well of following up. And I mean, and Situate is a great example. There was an issue with kind of the HVAC systems and getting started, and, you know, their designer, their subconsultant came out well after the job was finished, many, many times, and really stuck with it, like really, you know, did, did the town a solid by kind of working it all the way through. And they also understand the concern about making a building too complicated, um, and wanting to be careful of that, because while controls and everything become more and more computer dependent and that sort of thing, you don't want to have to have a aeronautical engineering degree to be able to operate these buildings, because at the end of the day, the designers who design them leave, and they're left to the firemen, the women that are there, you know, that's not their job, they have to figure that out. So understanding that, I think, is a big part of, on the front end, of who the end user is, I think is, is really important.
Awesome. Thank you for your diligence. It sounds like it was a lot of work, and it's going to pay off for the town, so thank you very much.
I mean, my questions regarding the learnings from the last project and the differentiators between the firms have already been answered. I just want to say thank you for bringing up the topic of the importance of community engagement. Um, I feel like Mr. Alex's visuals are getting more complex with each week here, and so I'm worried to see what they're going to be if we don't give them a forum, uh, to be able to, uh, have those be seen and being consumed. So thank you very much for identifying that as being so important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need a motion? So is there, is this the motion that was amended?
I have the new one.
Okay.
I move that the board vote to approve the contract with Doran Whittier, Whittier as the fire station designer, subject to any proposals or changes acceptable to town council, and authorize the firm to complete the feasibility phase of the project.
Second, um, at, by way of discussion, just, um, for the non-existent person at home who's noting that the, um, agenda has five words that are different than, um, what Mr. Calcutta just read into the record. It is a friendly amendment within the scope, which it basically is adding that in the event that town council, whose job it is to keep us out of trouble, sees a problem or is working with the contract, makes an edit, we don't need to come back here to revoke it. And so, any other discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Number four. Thank you very much. Uh, Blythe?
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is to approve a contract for police lieutenant. Um, very pleased to have Chief Stone and, uh, who will be Lieutenant Hines with you in the meeting tonight. Um, as you know, earlier this year, the town had renewed a contract with Lieutenant Shannon, uh, as our police lieutenant, who'd been in the job for a number of years, uh, and then he moved on to retirement in mid-September, leaving this position vacant. Um, upon the recommendation of the chief in my meeting with Sergeant Hines, uh, both of us strongly recommend that he be promoted to this position. Um, he's been with the department his, I think, his whole career, um, and been in a role of sergeant for quite a long time, and, uh, has had a chance to understand a number of facets about the department, um, but ready to move up into the management ranks. And so the contract that's in your packet, uh, is very much, is almost very much the same as the one that was executed by the board in, uh, the spring for Lieutenant Shannon. Uh, it is slightly, um, different, uh, lower in cost based on a couple of factors that go into police contracts. Um, but I think, uh, as I say, I can't see everybody in the room from my angle at the moment, but I believe they're both here, and I would love for you to have the chance to just chat with him for a minute about any questions you might have about him taking on this new role.
Thank you very much. Would you like to talk about it?
Little lead in, yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh-
Warm up the room.
Obviously, we're in here for an appointment and ratification of the employment agreement that, of the fifth lieutenant in Norfolk police history. You know them all?
I know, I think four.
Yeah, yours truly.
That's what I figured was one.
John Holmes, John Carroll, and Robert Shannon.
So I, I, Holmes is the one I missed in my counting.
Yeah, that's, that was back in the 90s or something. So anyway, um, Tim started , uh, working for us in, as a dispatcher, and it seems to be the path for many of our officers until we had the MECC, because it's a great place to learn the job and learn the people of Norfolk, the streets, the, and what type of calls you get. So he'd started there in, in nine of 87. Uh, he, he became a reserve officer in July of 88, uh, full-time officer in January of 89, and he became a sergeant in August of 99. So he's been sergeant, uh, he's a senior sergeant right now, um, and started as lieutenant in October of 21. So, and he's filling the vacancy of a longtime, uh, police officer in Norfolk, uh, Bob Shannon, uh, 36 years on the job. That's commendable for anybody. Um, so, and Tim will be on the schedule pending your approval next week.
I don't know what to do. I just, I'm just, you guys, it seems like it's a new-brainer, obviously, and you guys all think it's awesome, and I think it's awesome, and I never know what, quite what to say, so, um, I'll leave it to you guys, because you guys always have really super warm and wonderful things, and I just think it's awesome. So that's it. Nita?
All right, um, so it's awesome. We're glad to, um, to grow from within. I think that's very exciting, and, and, um, I trust the people making the recommendation to you, and so I think that's very exciting.
Thank you.
I just would want to encourage the, um, chief to consider, now we have an opening, and to really, it's an opportunity to add diversity to our force, if that's possible, and that's something I think that would be a positive, um, step forward for us in Norfolk. So, um, I think it's fabulous and welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I had nothing really much more to add, and I just, congratulations, and I look forward to the contributions.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I, I told him that you might want to know a little bit about him, so, you know, we had this before, we had this discussion before, and, and we had two recent sergeants, one of which is sitting here tonight, uh, so if you want, you want to hear where he lives or, you know, or anything like that.
Oh, from him? Okay, I just didn't want to put anybody on the spot.
Oh, he's ready.
I just, all right, so why don't you tell us a little something about yourself?
Uh, I was, uh, grew up in Rentham, uh, and then, uh, as the chief said, in 87, I started working for the town. So I pretty much spent my whole adult life in Norfolk working. Uh, it's a great community. I look forward to the challenges of the position, and I look forward to, uh, to, uh, to build upon what the chief and the deputy have started for years. Um, and currently I have, you know, a wife and two children, one in college and one that's out in the, the working force, so, uh, getting a little up there in age, and, uh, you know, it's, it's an exciting time for all of us, so.
Did you go to KP?
I did, yeah, yes.
So?
Yeah, right through, you know, so, very familiar with the town, very familiar with-
Really branched out pretty far.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Rentham, all the way over to-
It's crazy, yeah.
You are like just a traveler. Yep.
Yeah.
It's amazing what people will do. They'll just pick up and go, and you just never know where the road's going to take you, which is great.
So two things I left out. I met, I know that he was a call firefighter in Rentham for a long period of time, and he, he's been an EMT for a very long time, so.
A little value add for the, for the folks scoring at home, you know?
Yeah, it was, it was just, it was a great opportunity to bring what, you know, on the Fire Department over here, and, and at the time, it was a call apartment, and it's just any way we could, and just a great working relationship with the Fire Department. Just want to continue that. Knowing both sides kind of gives me a little bit of advantage, so, and appreciation, so.
Will we have a more formal pinning promotion ceremony?
And so, we, Blythe and I had a, a long discussion through text here last night, um, what we're planning on doing is having a pinning. You know, that would give Tim an opportunity to bring his family in.
Family, yeah, that's what we-
And I know the whole department's going to show up, so we're going, we'd have to pick a room that's big enough for that, so.
We're planning on the weather, it's supposed to be good earlier and outside.
If it's, you know, depending on the weather, yeah. Um, we, we had opted for it like we did last time, to have it up in the, uh, meeting room, up in the MECC, and, uh, maybe zoom it, or have you, have you all come over-
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'd pick a time that was convenient for all of you, and then given your work schedules, but, uh, so that's what we thought.
That'd be awesome.
That would be awesome.
Yeah. Good, cool.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you done with us?
I was trying to get rid of you like five minutes ago. I'm joking. So I guess now we just have, do we have a, a motion?
I move that the board ratify a contract with Timothy Hines as police lieutenant effective October 10th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations once again.
Oh, all of a sudden, our audience, like you guys aren't going to just skate to the end.
We understand.
I mean, there's just so much. Well, if Ernie's leaving, I don't. I think Ernie's going to talk to the chief out in the hallway. All right, Blythe, number five?
All right, just one thing I also wanted to add about the lieutenant. As, as we, uh, anticipate the retirement of both the chief and the deputy chief next year, one thing I meant to say earlier is it's important to bring along people who will be, uh, ready for those, um, some of those management positions going forward, and so, um, Tim Hines is the, is the, is the right guy to start into that process, um, and then work towards taking the, uh, the department forward, so.
I just like that, I mean, obviously, I didn't, not obviously, I didn't go to KP, but I love when you meet people who are staying and are helpers, who started and then came through the same school system, interacting with the people that they're, you know, here to help. I, I just think that that, I know it can't always be that way, but having grown up in a town that had a very similar, you know, I got pulled over once, and, um, because I was going a little bit fast, and the guy who came up to the side had gone to high school with my mother, and I was in so much trouble, or Gina, I guess, because he was like, I was just giving him the ticket. He's like, no, I'm calling your parents. just giving the ticket. He's like, no, I'm calling your parents. Just give me the ticket. So, which I think is kind of nice. So, thank you very much.
And we've had some good discussions about what needs to, what is, we should keep about the department, what's wonderful about it, and what sorts of things we need to start to think about changing in the future.
Well, we are like the sixth safest town in the country, so let's just keep that in the back of our heads when we're noodling around with the slicing and the dicing. All right.
On the more mundane order of things, the state requires that we fill out, approve a form regarding our population estimate for July of next year. They use this for the purpose of determining how many licenses for alcohol that are, we can have in the community. And so on the advice of our town clerk, we have filled this out with our, roughly our 2020 census number of 12,000 population. And so we're asking for your approval of that as the local licensing authority.
So I see that Carol estimated the population at 11, well, said the population is 11,620, 662. So it's just an educated guess that so many people will be born, less the people who pass, plus the people who move in, right? Like, it's just a.
Right. Her number is always going to be a little bit different than the federal census because it depends on people filling out the local census form and sending it back. You know, it's always hard to say if a family of two moves out of a house and a family of five moves in, you know, that, those things just happen. So we're kind of taking the middle of the road approach with the federal census number.
And do you, what do they do? How many licenses do we have currently and based on what number? I mean, what's the, if you know, I don't.
Not off the top of my head.
Trying to come up with questions for people, not to have an answer for, but it does seem like you're thinking, yes, I do.
I'm counting them out. I don't know. I'm not going to say that. I'll be wrong.
I think we, I'd have to, I know that Judith has that information because she's working on the relicensing for next year, and I can have her.
I was just curious if it like actually, you know, if we were at like 10 and it would bump us to 12, you know, I was just curious. I don't know. It's just why they.
I don't think it's going to change, but I know we have an open license or two, but I'm not sure if it's for a restaurant or it's just for packaged stores, off crumbs.
And I'm assuming that it is, the larger the population, the more licenses you are allowed to have so that.
Correct.
I, my last boring story was when I promised when I was an ADA, I lived in Paul, which is the next town. 2.5 square mile town, very few people and like 28 licenses or something like that. It was just, it was fun. There's a lot of work to be done as an ADA there. So I have no more questions. You?
I'm good with you.
No, none. All right. Is there a motion that we need to? I got.
I move that the board vote to approve the estimated increased population of Norfolk as of July 10th, 2022 will be 12,000 as contained in MGL Chapter 138, Section 17.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item six.
Item six is the town's application to the Green Communities Program. This year, this is our first competitive application after having received our initial grant when we became a green community. Due to the hard work by Matt Hafner and the Energy Committee, they are applying for three projects for the AGLA school for a total of $145,000. Those three projects are a building management control system, some lighting upgrades, and weatherization projects. My understanding is the reason they picked those three projects is they were identified in our original plan and are the projects that will help us gain the most ground towards reaching our 20% reduction over five years. So the application is due on the 8th, and they're asking for your approval to submit the application, that some of the details of which are actually in your packet.
And if memory serves, this is, no, filling out the application does not in any way result in us owing some large amount of money in the event that the.
Nope. This is a, here's no match required for this grant. You can apply for up to $200,000. They've identified 145. Hopefully, we get all those. But if not, the only match really is the sweat equity of the committee and Matt to make it all happen.
Makes my vote a lot easier. Kevin, any questions?
Nope.
Anita?
None whatsoever.
All right. Do you have a motion?
I turned away from the motion page, but I can get there quickly.
I got it. I move that the board vote to approve the town's application to the state Green Communities Grant Program.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, seven.
Awful lot of work that's gone into this by both Matt and the committee. So my hat's off to all of them. It's quite a daunting process, and they've done a great job.
But the return on investment is pretty incredible.
It is.
That's awesome. We will slap Matt on the back when we next see him.
Please do.
As a thank you, not in any way abusively, because that would be wrong and against the law. Item seven?
It's time for a, to plan a Santa parade. The Norfolk Lions would like to bring back the Santa parade this year on December 5th. So they're asking for approval. There's a letter in your packet from them about that, to hold the parade from Premon Kennedy to Town Hill and to then use Town Hill for some of the festivities afterwards.
Does the police, fire, and border health say that this was okay?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, they did.
Thank you.
I just was thinking to myself that both Anita and I are going to need to be on a five-second delay because I heard the word Santa and I, expletive, deleted. It's, I understand it's October, but goodness gracious. So I have no questions, Kevin?
None. Excited.
Comments, concerns?
We're happy to be there.
Not any, it's just too soon. All right. So I have a motion.
I move, I, see, I was right there with, I move that the board approve to, that the board approve, let me try.
Skip, well, it's not, no, there's two approves in there, just trick you up.
I move that the board approve the annual Santa parade and use of Town Hill for the Lions Club on December 5th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item eight?
Item eight is discussion point to talk about the transfers and the capital projects that we are planning to put forward to the November 9th town meeting. There's also an updated copy of the warrant in your packet. And besides that, there is a listing of all of the capital projects that were submitted by the various departments this year using our new platform.
You're a little bit, or I don't know if she's muffled because of her, because of that.
I just had my papers on top of my computer.
Cocktail napkin on top.
I moved them, and that's better.
That is better.
Thank you. Sorry about that. So overall, just to set the stage this year, our free cash has been certified due to the work of the finance department and Todd, and it is significantly higher than it's been in the past couple of years. I think you probably all realized that that would happen when we went over the last financial statement from the fourth quarter. But our free cash is about $3 million, $85,000 this year. And just as a point of reference, the year before, it was just over $1 million. So that gives us some opportunity here to catch up on some things and put some money aside in various places. And that's really what's driven the proposals that we've put forward. And I'll go over these in a very high level. We went over them in quite a lot of detail advisory last week, if anyone wants to watch that, take a look at that tape. But also happy to answer any questions that you have. Starting with transfers, the priority here is to put aside some funds in two areas where it's important for town to do so. First, you know, PEB funding, we started out two years ago at $25,000, and we've been trying to double that each time. Last year, we put in $50,000, and our proposal this year is to go to 100. Similarly, the town hasn't been able to put money into its stabilization fund in a couple of years. And ideally, the minimum threshold that bond rating agencies and best practices call for is 5% of your operating budget. We've fallen below that as the budgets increase each year. We're at about $1.8 million, and we should be, you know, a little bit over $2 million. So we're recommending that we should put in $200,000. And then the other items on the list are smaller, and they really are more in the order of transfers. The fire department, we only included $5 grand in their operating budget for turnout gear, and they really need to, the request is for 16 to buy the number of suits that they should each year to replace ones that are expiring. They got a, they've gotten a federal grant for replacement of most of their hose, and it requires a 5% match. That's what that number's in for. And they very much need a thermal imaging camera for their work. They have requested two, one to be transferred into their budget. And then if you recall the discussion about the ADA compliance with our buildings, our facilities, and the work we need to do to start to address those, we'd like to apply for a state grant. They're available for up to $250,000 a year for work on such things. And we're looking for a small amount of money to do some design and engineering so we could put ourselves in a very good position to apply for that grant and carry out that work. Any questions before I go any further on the transfers?
How close does the 200,000 get us to the 5%?
I think we actually should probably put in 300,000 if we wanted to get very close to that 2, that 5%. That's really a policy decision for the board. We can afford to spend it. The approach, the recommendation that Todd and I have was to kind of slow and steady wins the race. So we're planning, if you looked at this in totality, planning to spend about half of the free cash this year and keep the other half for whatever comes up the rest of the year, but also don't expect it to be as high again next year. So we're wanting to leave some aside so we can make another contribution to this in FY23. We can do it sooner or we can wait. It's up to, it's up to all of us, what you want to recommend.
Kevin?
No questions from mine.
Well, I'm just thinking out loud. So doing it sooner helps us hit that. I would love to hit the 5%, but the expense is that we don't have that money then in free cash in case something happens, right? And so in that case, low and steady is probably better, as much as I want to hit the 5%. Low and steady seems like a good plan.
We think so. I mean, if you looked at the whole list of capital requests, it's over $4 million, and we're planning to spend about one and a half. We're just trying to be very careful that we have the flexibility when we need in the future for this or for other things that come up.
Thank you.
So the, because we're in a much different financial position than we have been in previous years, we're, the theme of the capital items is primarily to address either building or equipment needs that are really important. There are some things that are on the wish list that we'd like to do, and you really won't find those on this list. Starting at the top, replacing three police cruisers. We haven't done that in a couple of years. And our cruisers with the most mileage is getting around 120,000 or 130,000 on some of those units. They're serviceable, but not necessarily well for the police department. But where our real need also is in the vehicles that we downcycle to, say, the building department facilities. We've had a real struggle this year with cars that won't pass inspection that are absolutely not worth putting in money to keep them going, given their condition. And we've even had to rent a vehicle for a while this summer and fall because we don't have enough vehicles that are roadworthy. So three cruisers helps the police department. It also makes, helps us get some vehicles out of our fleet that need to be disposed of and being able to downcycle those older police cars to other uses. It's time to replace firearms for the police department. That's, they're about 10 or 11 years old, and although they don't get used out in the field, which is great, they get used extensively in training and actually wear out. Jaws of Life, we're thrilled to get a earmark with the assistance by Representative Dooley, federal state earmark to replace some of that equipment, but it costs a bit more than that. So there's a match there to replace all the main set and two smaller sets, all the, all the equipment in the department. It's also time to replace cardiac monitors on the two ambulances, and those monies will come out of the ambulance receipts for appropriation account. We have three items that we want to borrow for, significant items. First is it's time to replace our 33-year-old fire tanker truck. It really needs to come out of service. We're very much hoping for a federal grant for that. And replacing two pieces of equipment with one. Now that October 1st has passed, we didn't win it again this year. It's our second year trying. So we want to at least replace the tanker, and that's the estimated price to do that. We need to continue to replace major pieces of plow trucks in DPW. This would replace, I think it's either a 1993 or a 1997 truck. And then the salt shed, that is over 30 years old. We suffered a, had a wind event last year, blew off a portion of the roof. We got an insurance settlement to repair the roof, but it's one more good wind event, and things might not be, work out so well. It's really time to replace it, and that's the estimated cost. That project's actually going to be in front of the planning board next week for review of the site plan. Also, I want to continue to make some targeted investments, proposing to increase the amount of money we put towards our local roads. Last year, we budgeted $100,000. This year, we want to increase it to $200,000. There's some building projects here. We need to replace the trough drain in the middle of the garage at DPW. It's original to the building and as failed. There's a piece of equipment for DPW. It's called a hot box, which we use for paving, which I can go into more detail about that, which will make our work more efficient and the patching that we do lasts longer. You can see the cemetery expansion project that we've talked about at a previous meeting for $25,000 coming from the perpetual care fund. Some exterior repairs to the COA. It's deteriorating badly on two sides of the building. So we are looking at vinyl siding, the building similar to what you see on the town hall. We're still having conversations about that because there's some strong interest in having an automatic door put in at the, at the COA, different than it is today. I'm trying to make, we're still working on the exact details of that project, but that's the thrust of it. The schools have asked for $125,000 a year to address some of their technology needs, a new phone system, computers, and the like. Project that we wrestled the most with is the next one for the library exterior painting that came to you a year ago and got Tommy the approval for $90,000 for this project. Went out and hired an architect to actually design all of the details and specifications which you needed to go out to bid. They in turn got a cost estimate for it, and fortunately it's come in at three times the price. That was shocking to us, figured it was pandemic-related. We actually used the expertise of Vertex just recently to look at another estimate for a project that had an exterior painting in it for a town near us to tell us, validate whether this information we're getting was, was real or, or hopefully not. Unfortunately, it is. The cost of doing a project like this is more in the order of $260,000 or $70,000. So we're asking for money to go back and add to it and complete it. The library also needs its building management system controls updated. They are long past their life, and that has been a problem for the heating and cooling of the inside of the libraries, addressing those. Facilities truck is long past its useful life. It has not had an inspection sticker in over a year. It has an important job to do. They've asked for a new one. We're suggesting a used one because of the job that it does. And then lastly, the library project, as I just mentioned, was a real learning experience about how we best prepare to request. And then lastly, the library project, as I just mentioned, was a real learning experience about how we best prepare to request funds for projects. And in the past, it's been, well, we'll, we'll go out, we'll get an estimate and we'll ask for that and then we'll go back and do the work to, do the design or put together the specs and go out to bid. And I think maybe in past times that worked okay. But what we've learned is, is doesn't help us be best prepared to advise the town and how we should do something and what it really will cost. So one other quest we have on here is to put aside some, some dollars so that we can look forward to the projects that are going to come in '23. And do that work ahead to make sure we're bringing to the town a project that's well thought through. And that we have, we're shovel ready, if you will, to go out to bid when we do have the funds and we're confident about how much a project will cost. So I know I've run through those very quickly. Happy to answer any other questions that you have and also suggest just looking through the list of things. You'll find all these things on the list and some that we didn't recommend this year.
So I just have a couple of quick ones and then I'll turn it over to everyone else. And in terms of, in terms of the packet and the information that's going to be going to the folks at town meeting. One of the questions is where will people be able to get the information in order to sort of noodle around and vet this stuff themselves before they show up at town meeting? Because this is a lot of information and if they're not able, for folks who want to know, they're not able to get access to it soon enough, then, then that's going to be, you know, frustrating for them. And maybe they won't feel as knowledgeable, yet they'll still let us all know their questions at that point. And no one wants that to happen, at least about me. So what can I do to facilitate people actually learning about this stuff basically before they show up to town meeting?
So one of the important tasks that Todd and I have before us as soon as I get back is to take the information that we have gathered through this new platform. And put out a actual proposed capital improvement plan document that goes over all of this and all the other details of what's, what's requested and what isn't. And helps everyone learn about them. So we're planning to do that. I think we need to have more information on slides about these capital projects at the meeting than we've had maybe in the past when it's been a shorter list. As well as have all the subject matter experts there. But I welcome any ideas anyone has about how to get more news out about it than, than those ideas.
I'm not, I don't have any right this second. I was just thinking there's a lot here and it's not just line item entries. There's a history and to each of them and why there's a need, et cetera, which I think that if people had the backstory, they would, either maybe it would help them make their decision or certainly would inform their questions going forward. So I'll think about that. I'm sure other people will as well. But my two sort of current questions, one, it's odd what I ping on. I'm sure everyone's like this, but the two things that I pinged on, one was the salt shed. And my question regarding the salt shed is with respect to the fact that there was a wind incident that heated the roof somewhere and there was an insurance money. When did that happen?
It happened about, I'd have to ask Matt or Blair. I think it happened about a, a year ago or, or maybe it was late winter. Don't remember.
The only reason I ask is because if we spent, now I understand that the insurance company comes in, audits, it determines you can replace your roof and gives you the money. But if we knew that the roof, the whole building is this 1970s building, horrible, no good, needs all this work building. Why did we replace the roof on it rather than pocketing the money for this project and/or just not blowing money on a roof that we were going to then just immediately turn around and replace the building?
So great question. It was only a small section of the roof that was damaged. And so the facility staff actually made the repair themselves. The settlement was about $40,000. They used about 10 of it to buy the materials and do the work. And then the balance of it, we actually hired the engineer who has been developing the site plan for us. Because the DPW, interestingly to me, never had an approved site plan from the planning board. And in order to get approval to put this in exactly same location that it's going to go, we needed to go do that work. And so we're using the balance of funds to achieve that. And then we'll be ready to go out to the bid in late winter and build, replace the shed in the spring is our, is our plan.
Is the plan to basically, like the current one is an oversized Morton building, basically. Is it like, are you, are you planning something fancy dancy or just like another corrugated metal shed for salt?
This one is a wood shed. It's, and with a, with a typical shingle roof. The new one will be a con, will be a paved surface. It will have a concrete, if you will, concrete block wall, walls around it. I think maybe about 10 feet high. And then it will have a hoop type structure and a canvas roof, which will be higher than, slightly higher than the current one. It will be much, be much improved because right now we can't necessarily drive vehicles in with a bucket and move that bucket up and, up and down, turn it around to load materials inside because of the truss structure that's in it. This will enable us to keep more of our material inside out of the weather than we do today. And I don't think I have any other overall.
So I'll move away from that. My last question was regarding the live, out, the exterior library painting. How did we arrive at the figure? I know I was there, I just don't remember. How did we arrive at the figure at town meeting that ended up being incorrect?
So facility staff went out and obtained one or two different quotes from different firms that do painting work. And also made sure that their quotes included prevailing wage because it's, it's subject to that.
Right.
And then when they went out to do the work to develop the plans and specs, that's when the architect went and had an estimate done and told us that, no, the market had significantly changed. I think part of it, the quote was done pre-pandemic and I think that has had a, a factor here. That's why we went out and received, obtained another look from another firm about this current estimate to just make sure that this wasn't just a one-off that was perhaps incorrect. But the market really is unfortunately where we're finding it.
Okay, those are my only ones, sorry.
To public, I'm just thinking while you were talking that it's, it's interesting to, when you tell the explanations, it's super helpful, right? It really gives you a lot of information and it might be useful to have some kind of an FAQ document for people so that you look at like, oh, three cruisers. Well, what happens to the old cruisers? That actually saves the town money. And so if we had it like an FAQ, it might be a little bit less, I know it's work.
Happy to, that's great.
I'm wondering if that's a way to say, didn't, you know, salt shed, didn't we just replace the roof? There's a question, right? And so then you can say, this is what we did. We actually did a patch job on it in order to save money to do, like that's useful information for people to know. And so having it as an FAQ might be, might be interesting. I had a couple of things that pinged different than your pings. I remember, I, you'll be shocked that I remember, but when we were going through those capital budget presentations, the, the fire truck that they talked about was a combination fire truck that was much more expensive. But this is a completely different truck, right? That's a, that's a question.
Right, so we had been, if you had seen a version of this a month ago, it was a request for $800,000 to buy a combined engine tanker. That's what we talked about last year. That's what we were hoping for. And as we, as the grant round timing wound down and we realized we weren't going to get the $800,000, we had to think about what the town could really afford to borrow. And so trying to keep our, our debt costs fairly level from year to year, said to the chief, we just can't afford $800,000 and take care of the salt shed and, and deal with a large truck. So we decided to pivot and, and just replace the tanker. And that's the estimated price that we have based on his conversations with manufacturers. It's disappointing, it's not what we hoped to do.
One of, it was very sexy. But anyway, I also remember, I just remember the logic of that combination truck was very elegant. And the reason for the combination truck was partly it was, have served the purpose of two trucks in one, which is nice. And he said by going from two trucks in one, it also allowed us to have three bays instead of four bays. So there's a, there's a cost implication in the new building too, in terms of going to a tanker truck?
Well, I mean.
Or maybe I don't remember correctly.
No, you, you remember very well. It's, it's disappointing because yes, it might've saved us a bay space, but the, I guess the flip side of that is this doesn't require any more bay space than we have today. I mean, I fully expect that as we design this new apparatus bay, it is going to have a little more space than we absolutely need because we're planning for the future.
Yes.
But it just doesn't feel responsible to go and borrow that much more money.
Especially with the projects that are coming up. I understand. And then the other thing that, again, we have different things that trigger us. But I remember from the presentation from the capital expenses that the, the police chief was talking about replacing the sidearms, that they needed new sidearms. And in the description here, it says semi-automatic weapons. Are those one in the same or is that a different request?
Uh, one in the same.
One in the same. All right. All right, that was my only question.
I just had a couple of points. Most of the questions are actually covered already. Being at the end of the line is actually kind of fantastic because you don't have really too much content you left with. The first one was surrounding the item. I just wanted to reiterate the importance for the item and information technology labeled cybersecurity assessment. I know that all of us feel like we're currently working on our master's degree in an online university for cybersecurity.
Or, or I almost thought they were spam until like a week. I thought they were spam, I was like, nor, nor.
But it is very important. I know I keep harping on it, but you know, a community that's bordering us was hit for $522,000 in a cyber attack. So $26,000 for the assessment to ensure that we're on top of our game is not really too big of a loss.
And I actually have learned from those, I've learned a couple of things from those about looking at the URL more carefully. Yeah, yep.
So Todd and I are planning to apply for a state IT grant for that cybersecurity work. Those were, were well funded by the state in the last grant round. So we're hoping that they are willing to continue to funding those activities. And that grant is due, I'm turning that in next week when I get back. That's how we hope to fund that.
Thanks, buddy. The second, I'm not going to beat a dead horse on the process for capital requests as it pertains to the estimate that we received and went to the town with for the exterior painting at the public library. I'm glad that you're addressing that and finding a more efficient way to do that because there is nothing that impedes our ability to be able to appeal to the community.
Trust us.
Than to have to go back to them again for the same thing. So if we could avoid that in the future, that would be special.
Great.
And the last thing I wanted to point out was the formatting for this is beautiful.
I know, it is like.
Wanted to tie that back to, I imagine this was developed in ClearGov?
You haven't even seen the whole thing yet.
Oh my God, now she's getting giddy.
Just wait for it, you're going to be blown, blown your socks off. Yeah, this is just a list. When we publish the whole thing, it's going to be quite a long document, but it includes pictures, attachments, locations. If it's a, if it's a, say a park in a particular area. It allows us to put in a bunch of information about funding sources and, and glossaries and all, all sorts of things you'd find in a typical thorough budget book. So that's what I mentioned Todd and I will be working on when I get back. We're going to have a separate capital budget this year and then we're going to be doing a full operational budget book going forward.
Yeah.
This is just a list.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw in a quick, you know, spot here for the ability for residents to currently access ClearGov from the website. I saw that you put a button right on the homepage at the top of the screen, so that's fantastic.
What color is the button?
Same as the rest. I'm not sure.
It was a quiz.
Green.
The button on the right.
Nevertheless, I did want to just confirm too, that I know that it's not currently available on the web portal right now to look at the capital expenses. But once you have something that's ready to be published, it'll be located there as well, right?
I'm not sure if it's going to be located there. We will, we'll create it in a PDF. I need to talk with them about that, but we'll definitely have it prominently on the website as well. Be able to email it to people, variety of ways. It's really a way for us to, to develop it and then publish it.
What I love, I, sorry for walking off camera there, but Mr. Alex, I wanted him to see what we were seeing. I don't know necessarily if that's going to be the last inculcation, but I really think that it is an easy way to, like, I'm a huge proponent of the pie chart. And I think it's an easy way to disseminate and, and absorb information and then be able to pull the questions there from. So that's why I just figured, I'm sure he saw it before, but I was like, in case you haven't seen the glossy pie chart, I want, okay. No, no, you do see, I was just meant on this particular one, what we were looking at that you were looking at.
And I would just add, I'm thinking back about communicating with the public. One of the things we could do, I'm sorry to go back to the FAQs, but we could kind of use that as an opportunity to celebrate some of the victories. Like we have three times as much free cash as we had last year. Like how much free cash do we usually have? Oh, funny you ask. We have three times as much free cash as we did last year to, to the, and so we can celebrate some of those things. And perhaps we should also include a list of, these are the things we wanted to buy and we didn't.
Like the fire truck.
We wanted to buy these things and we, and we did not. So, and we got a used truck instead of a new one and we got a tanker instead of the sexy combo.
We could just wait on the truck and not have a salt building.
And whose house burns down?
Why do we need a new salt building? We can have a sexy truck. Anyway, we can talk about it on the floor of town meeting. I'll make an amendment. Moderator will love that.
Speaking of the warrant, it is two articles shorter than you saw the last time. For two reasons. One, we took out the stabilization article because those funds are in the transfer. And secondly, we aren't ready to move forward with the codification of the general bylaws yet. There's a little more work to be done for that, so bring it back in the spring. We have one other article. When I discussed it with the moderator, he suggested we did not need the article for committee reports, that we don't usually have it in the fall. I've looked back and we have had it on the warrant, so I'm just wanting to pose the question to you, to you. I haven't had a request for anyone to give a, a report, so I can take it off the warrant. Or I can leave it there, we can pass over it, just wanted to.
My recollection, I, I, I'm sure there's been times where we've had it because there was something that people, probably during things like the police building, like when there were things that we wanted to report to the town on ongoing, building or whatever, but that it is, the shorter meeting, right? The fall town meeting is, is, is a special town meeting. And so the ideal is that it just be dealing with the things you couldn't get to in the spring. But that said, my recollection is that we were thinking of using the committee, time for Kevin to report on what was going on with Norfolk County and the money, which I think is important. And so, but from my perspective, I'm happy to defer to Mr. Moderator, whether or not he wants that as a committee announcement or just in advance or at some other point in town. Like it's six to one, right? Like why not just have the committee so that we can hear about what's going on with our acts, a potential access to additional funds that help offset some of the stuff we're noodling that night? But that's what I think.
Memory service, isn't that also the window where Sean would be asked to come speak about some things from Beacon Hill and what's going on at the state level as well?
Yeah, if there's anything that's going on there, yeah. So there's usually a couple of things that do, that do, but I definitely know that from a, just because people haven't sort of said, oh, we have something to report. I know that we wanted Kevin to talk about what was going on with the Northern County. And I feel like there was one other and it may have just been to highlight if we weren't able to get to it in the section regarding the free cash, to highlight the efforts that had gone into like what this was, right?
Didn't we talk about the fire station building committee giving update?
They might have an update too. So I think the consensus at least from 2:30.
I just, it's COVID, COVID is not over. So I think if we can do updates, but it should be, I don't want it to be a long meeting with everybody on an inside room. I don't want it to be a long meeting with everybody in an inside room.
Well, I mean, it's the moderator gets to decide the length and how long people speak.
True.
I just, I thought that we had discussed the fact that.
We do want to celebrate what we have done well.
It wasn't even the celebration, it was the Kevin being able to inform everybody about the money.
I think that's really important.
And our opportunities to speak to a larger gathering of the community are few and far between.
They are indeed.
I can't imagine that he would speak for more than two minutes.
Yeah, Fire Station Building Committee is talking about having a community meeting, and it might be a great opportunity to tell people about that at town meeting and get them aware that we're planning something so we can really start to have the conversation.
But some of that too, Anita's point, things like making announcements about those other meetings, they can, those can be, hey, pick up this additional printed copy of stuff at the front and then just direct people's attention to it rather than spending a lot of time, you know. But I definitely think that, I think it's an esoteric issue that most people aren't aware of in terms of the funding and that sort of people, oh, county, whatever, it's just not very interesting. And in fact, the impact, the potential impact, the potential loss of an impact if it hadn't been, you know, handled the way that it seems to be, I think sort of touches everybody, so, as opposed to, I know Kevin will just do such a great job of telling us all about it in narrative format. Maybe, I mean, it's not my moderator, you may see, you can go for like ever. So that was.
In general, I'm all about that. I think it would be great to promote that. I just.
I just think timing-wise, just for his thing, it's a fall. All right, so that's that, right? Are we done talking about that? It's going to be dead air, my producer's going to get really angry at me. Imaginary producer. So I guess that brings us to town administrator updates.
So just wanted to tell you that we had formed an internal committee to work on replacement of the website, and we interviewed four firms last week. It's been a really exciting project so far, just to get everybody engaged in how we can move from the platform that we have to one that's much more robust and interactive for residents and helps us communicate with people and do business with them. So we're looking to select a firm once we do some reference checks and some more thought about what exactly it is we need to be able to provide to the community and start on that project a little bit later this fall. So we'll keep you involved with that. We're going to want to do some community outreach about what people would like to see from the website and things like that. So looking forward to it.
That's it.
Yep.
No, thank you, that sounds exciting.
None of mine.
Warrants.
I move that the board approve four warrants for the period September 21st, 2021 through September 28th, 2021 as printed on the agenda for this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Brings us to, not article, but whatever, item 12, 11, Jesus.
I move that the board vote to approve the September 7th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, look at, look at us. Getting it done.
I know, wait.
Thank you, everybody. Do I have a final motion?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.